I'll call this meeting of Fairfield County Council to order Monday, September 25th, 6:00 PM. First item is the approval of the agenda. Do we have a motion?
It's been moved and properly seconded to approve the agenda as presented.
Any discussion? Seeing none, those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Seven and zero. And next is the invocation. Councilmember Douglas.
Dear Lord, please recognize and guide each council member to make this meeting a good medium to remember. Help the leaders for the town and county to work together and have remedies our voters and citizens would be proud of. Bless our protectors, the law enforcement and military of the United States of America. Keep them safe and out of harm's way. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Mr. Douglas. Now, we're down to the approval of minutes from the regular meeting, September 13th, 2017. Do we have a motion? It's been moved and properly seconded to approve the minutes from our regular meeting, September 13th, 2017, as presented. Any discussion? Seeing none, those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? Seven and zero. Next is public presentations. We have none. And then the first public comment session, Ms. Davis, please.
We have one individual to speak tonight, Mr. Jerry Neely, speaking on watery sedimentation.
I just want to take this opportunity to thank council for their support in this problem out there. I think we're moving in a direction of finding out what we can do to try to get this under control, and I just wanted to let you know that we appreciate your help out there. Thank you.
That concludes segment one.
Thank you. We're now down to public hearing. It's an ordinance authorizing Fairfield County to purchase .29 acre more or less situated on the western side of Highway 215 near Jenkinsville, South Carolina, the county of Fairfield, tax map number 176-01-01-077-000, to be used for public safety or other uses deemed fit by the council. The other related matters. We'll open this public hearing at 6:02 PM, Monday, September 25th, 2017. Ms. Locklear, do we have anyone signed to speak?
No one signed to speak.
All right. Well, now, close this, or take a motion to close this public hearing at 6:02 PM, September 25th, 2017. It's been moved and properly seconded to close the public hearing. Those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? Thank you. We're seven and zero. Next, ordinances, resolutions, and orders. A is a third and final reading on ordinance number 687. Ms. Davis?
An ordinance authorizing an amendment to the master agreement governing the I-77 corridor Regional Industrial Park by and between Richland County, South Carolina, and Fairfield County, South Carolina, to expand the boundaries of the park to include certain real property located in Richland County, 209 Stone Ridge LLC, and other related matters.
Thank you, Mrs. Davis. Do we have a motion?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
It's been moved and properly seconded to provide third reading and final approval of ordinance number 687. Do we have any discussion? Seeing none, those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? Seven and zero. We're now down to item B, second reading of ordinance number 688. Ms. Davis?
An ordinance authorizing Fairfield County to purchase .29 acre more or less situated on the western side of Highway 215 near Jenkinsville, South Carolina, in the county of Fairfield, tax map number 176-01-01-077-000, to be used for public safety or other uses deemed fit by the council and other related matters.
Thank you, Mrs. Davis. Do we have a motion? It's been moved and properly seconded to provide second reading to ordinance number 688. Any discussion? Seeing none, those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? We're seven and zero. Next is board and commission minutes. We'll do both of these at once unless anybody has any questions or comments about either of them. A and B, Chamber of Commerce meeting minutes and behavioral health minutes. Do we have a motion? It's been moved and properly seconded to approve the minutes as presented for the Chamber of Commerce and Behavioral Health. Any discussion? Seeing none, those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? Thank you. We're seven and zero. Board and commission appointments? We have none. Old business, there is none. New business? We have a proclamation recognizing October 1st through 7th, 2017. It's National 4-H Week. Do we have a motion? It's been moved and properly seconded to approve the proclamation recognizing October 1st through 7th, 2017. It's National 4-H Week. Do we have any discussion? Seeing none, those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? Seven and zero. Next is item B, Midlands Workforce Area, South Carolina Work System Memorandum of Understanding pursuant to the Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Act. Do we have a motion? All right. It's been moved and properly seconded to approve the Midlands Workforce Area, South Carolina Work System Memorandum of Understanding that is pursuant to the Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Act. Do we have any discussion? Yes, Ms. Goins?
Explanation on that, please.
Yes, I was going to ask Mr. Taylor if you would, please, provide some.
I would be glad to. This is a standard memorandum of understanding that we pass entering our local workforce investment opportunity group with the South Carolina Works Delivery System. It just meshes what they do with what we do locally. And we do have Ms. Jennifer Leepart, who is the director here with our local office. And Jennifer, you'd like to get up and explain, really, this is again, is a standard, but it does vary a little bit from what we did last year, and I think it's to our benefit. But if you could come and address council.
This is basically just a standard memorandum, excuse me, of how the centers are to operate and how the partners are to work together. But what's different with this agreement is previous agreements due was not contributing to the operating expenses. Now, they will be contributing 25%. And that is because we now have a due employee that is there five days a week versus one day a week. So they can help with unemployment claims and SC Works questions. Just bringing, we're trying to bring more resources to Fairfield County.
Right. Thank you, Ms. Leepart. Any questions or comments from council members? All right. That being the case, we have the motion to approve. Those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? Thank you. We're seven and zero. Now, we're down to the county administrator's report. Mr. Taylor?
Yes, thank you. In keeping with having a department head speak to council and address them on their department each time, we do have Ms. Laura Johnson, who is our comptroller, will be addressing council tonight on the budget, giving an update on the budget. And we're also going to talk about the bonds. There's been some interest in the bonds, and we're going to go over some of the details of those.
I scheduled a presentation for an hour, so I hope that's okay with everybody. We good? I know I talk a lot. Fairfield County Finance Department. Mission is to ensure that all financial transactions of the county are accurately, thank you, classified, recorded, and reported. Next, I have a six-member staff, which includes the deputy comptroller, she's over there near the wall, a payroll coordinator, a grants coordinator, a fiscal analyst, accounts payable specialist, and an administrative assistant. Next, our year-end glance. I'm not going to read over all of this because it's really boring. From July to September, our fiscal year closes June 30th. So from July to September, we're getting ready for an audit, an audit doing fixed assets, prepaid assets, accounts receivable, and all these other various schedules. October to December, we're getting ready for our audit, and we're closing out all other payroll insurance, making payroll insurance changes. January, we're issuing W-2s, 1099s, in accordance with IRS regulations. February through May, we love our budget preparation process that lasts for those many months. And June, we close out the year, and guess what? Everything starts back over again. I told you, finance is so exciting. Some of our routine duties, daily opening the mail, sending out invoice to various departments, et cetera, I'm not going to read all of that to you. But for invoices annually, we pay between 12 and 13,900 invoices. So that means that's how much mail is coming in through the finance department. And we're sending those out to the departments so they can review, approve, so we can get them back in to be paid. On a biweekly basis, we are doing our payroll, and we're paying all our federal and state taxes. Monthly, we're doing all of our required reports and filings. And quarterly, we're doing the same thing, all of our quarterly reports and filings with the state and with the federal government. If I'm going too fast, just let me know. I can slow down. Two of our main activities right now that are going on in the finance department, we have an IRS field audit for calendar year 2015. And we also have our annual year-end audit that will be beginning shortly. Next, when it comes to the IRS audit, this is the first time we've had one since I've been here. The selection criteria is that they are looking at individuals that receive both a 1099 and a W-2. They look at the number of 1099s issued and any large swings from one year to another. That doesn't mean a large swing in 1099s or W-2s. It doesn't mean that there's a problem. It just means that there's a large fluctuation. You may have issued 500 1099s, and all of a sudden you jumped to, you went down to 100, or opposite. So that doesn't mean there's anything wrong, but it could trigger an IRS audit. The notification CP2100, it shows where we send vendors 1099, but the 1099 and IRS records just don't match up. It could be a tax ID number, a social security number, or simply the name of the company that they documented to us on a Form W-9. And so when the IRS sends us this, they don't necessarily tell you that the tax ID is wrong, the social security number is wrong, or the name is wrong. We just have to figure out what is wrong and correct it. We had the IRS auditor come to meet with us on the 13th and provided us with requesting, we provided him with some requested information, and he's going to be back in a couple of more weeks to pull some samples and to give us an update of what's going on with the audit. Okay. Next. Okay. Things that they specifically look at, they look at the percentage of the employees taxable income paid in federal taxes. So for example, if a person's W-2 show they paid zero federal income tax, that's going to get pulled. Or if they have an extremely low percentage of taxes coming out of their check, that will be pulled. They're going to look at employee forms, the W-2s, and they're going to look at the withholding forms. They're going to look at the W-9s that vendors complete that show the name of their company, their address, and their tax ID or social security number. They're also going to be looking at the personal use of company-owned vehicles. They want a list of who drives, who drives company-owned vehicles and for what purpose. And again, vendor discrepancies in the tax ID number and the name, what I just discussed. They'll also look at travel reimbursements, how we reimburse employees when they travel. They're going to look at the mileage, if we have properly given them the proper mileage back, and any other type of fringe benefits. One of those would be, for example, car allowance, if we're giving out car allowance, excuse me, which is something that we don't do. The next, the annual year-end audit, basically to summarize, we do closing entries, adjustments. We prepare a draft, a final is produced, and then later it is presented to council. And next is our quarterly report. This goes through June 30th, 2017. Now, I know it's September, and some of you are probably wondering why we're just getting it for June. But our year-end closes June 30th, but we keep our books open two more months, July and August, to make sure that we record any, pay any invoices for the old year. We pay them. We accrue them back. And also inter-receivables that are coming in that were due at June 30th, 2017, that gives us enough time to get those checks in so that we can post them to the proper fiscal year. From looking at this, you can see some highlighted items. And those highlighted items, the first part is revenue. On revenue, we investigated anything that was 100, 100% or over, excuse me, over 100%. The top highlighted is revenues, and as you can see, what we budgeted for revenues, more came in, $1.1,380,000 more in revenue came in, which is always a good thing. It's related to fees and fines and other items coming in, you know, planning, exzonin, magistrate court fees and fines, things you can't really actually budget for. For those items came in, or came in more than what was budgeted. General operating also came in more, that, those are the expenditures. So we exceeded the budgeted amount of expenditures, about $469,000. But that is an in-kind rent expense that we're required by the auditors to post. We don't pay rent for the Hahn Building, so we have to post an entry, as if we did pay rent, but we also offset it with an in-kind rent revenue. So both, so both of those wash. So it's not like it's a real expense. And on the next page of the report, the expenditures, you can see that our actual expenditures came under what was budgeted by $609,000. So we received more money than anticipated, and our budget, our expenditures were under what we budgeted. Next, now installment purchase revenue bonds. The issue of the, these bonds, these IPRBs as we call them, is the Fairfield Facilities Corporation that was incorporated as a nonprofit in 2013. The articles and the bylaws provide that the issuer has been organized exclusively for public and charitable purposes, specifically to acquire, lease, real and personal property, and develop, finance, refinance, construct, acquire, install, and operate certain public facilities to be used by the county, and such other projects located in and for the benefit of the county, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. The bylaws also provide for a five-member board, and the issuer, again, the Fairfield Facilities Corporation, has no operating history, no assets, and will have no other assets other than the interest in the 2013 facilities. These bonds are the obligation of the issuer. But however, next, under the purchase and use agreement, the county will purchase the real property and projects from the issuer under this agreement, which then obligates the county to make the installment payments, which includes the principal and the interest. The county can make those payments using any available source, including the issuance of general obligation bonds, which we call GOBs. Next, this is an update on the bonds when they first were issued. You'll see the original issue amounts. We have Series A and Series B, and you have the Series A, $3.7 million, Series 20B, $20.9 million for a total issuance of $24,690,000. Minus all the discounts, the bond issuance cost, et cetera, insurance, then the available that the county had to spend is, available to spend is $22,772,807.80. The principal balance of these bonds as of September 1st for the Series A is the $3,670,070. So if you look at the original issuance of the bonds and the principal balance that's due, you see that's not just a small difference in the two. That's because the principal payments on that particular bond is normally about $10,000. So we pay about $20,000 a year in the principal payments. Series B, you can see that the original issuance cost is the same as the principal balance as of 9/1/2017. That is because we've only been making the interest payments according to the amortization schedule. Series A bond, the maturity date is September 2025. Series B maturity date is September 2042. September 2042 for Series B. On both of these bonds, Series A and Series B, we have an amortization schedule, and it's a payment schedule. It tells us when the bonds are due, the bond payments are due, principal and interest, and how much. So on the Series B, according to the amortization schedule right now, we're only paying interest on the Series B.
Why? Why is the only interest being paid? Who determines what amount's paid?
I guess when the, when the bonds were done, only thing I get is amortization, amortization schedule telling me when the amount is due and how much is due and the date.
Well, is that the facilities board themselves is the ones that's doing this?
I would not say so.
You have here, issues bylaws provide for a five-member board.
Yes, it does.
As far as I know, it's not but three members on the board.
As far as I know, I think it's only two.
Two now?
Two.
I will say, we have looked into the process of paying these bonds off early, and we do have that in the presentation also. It's a process.
But if you have, if, if the Regent's Bank is, has let this, this money out, the borrowing of money through bonds, it might not be able to pay it out because of the way the bonds are structured. It might be a certain length of time that have to go before it's paid.
You are correct. And we have found the process of paying off the bond is to defees the bond legally, and we would have to put aside, and we'll go through this.
We'll have that in the presentation.
But we would have to put aside $30 million, and Laura will go over the details of that.
I'm sorry, Laura. I didn't mean to mess you up.
That's okay.
We're just trying to follow regular order from the rest of the meeting if we can.
Description of the bonds, the next one, next slide, please. This is, this has been in the bond documents ever since 2013, so I just decided to include that in, what the original purposes of the bonds were for. So 21.3 million, those were only estimates. Those weren't exact figures at the time. So like I said in the other PowerPoint, well, in the other page, it's 22.7 million to spend, and only was budgeted $21,300. So those, again, were just estimates that were put in the bond at the time. General obligation bonds, the next one, please. I decided to put in my presentation any general obligation bonds that the county has. And so we have eight general obligation bonds. I have the issuance dates listed, what the original bond amount was, and also the principal balance due as of September 1, 2017.
These are bonds that the county made to pay back the loan to Regent's Bank. Is this the bonds that we?
2014A all the way to 2017A. But the first one, the 2009 Build America Bond, no, that is not part of, that was issued in 2009, and it was for some capital projects to be done. So the principal balance totals as of 9/1/2017, $4,981,479. If you see I use 9/1/2017 in most of my presentation is because bond payments always due March and September 1, and so we had just had a September 1 payment. Okay. Last one. Can IPRB bonds be paid off early? That pen doesn't like me. Yes, but there are certain requirements. And to just summarize what's on the screen here in a nutshell, it's called a defeasance. You have to pay the principal and the interest for the bonds all the way up until 2023. So if tomorrow you decided I wanted to pay these bonds off, you still have to pay the principal and the interest on the bonds all the way up until 2023. And then after that, any bonds that are left, you would only have to pay the principal only. So for Series A, the maturity date, I think it says it, 2024. And then the other one, the Series B, is 2042. So you would have to pay all the principal and interest all the way up until 2023. Then after that, you don't pay any more interest, you just have to pay the principal amount of the remaining bonds. So we're probably still looking at still over about $30 million. No questions. Wonderful.
Is that all you have, Ms. Johnson?
Thank you.
Well, let me, let me ask you one question, and you may have, you may have already answered this, and I may have missed it. I was looking at something here. But what amount is left of that IPRB bond issue that has not been spent to date?
Oh, I'm sorry. I meant to say that it's about $10 million, approximately $10 million of the IPRB bond that has not been spent. And again, we can't just take that $10 million and just send it back, say, here you go. We still have to follow the defeasance requirement, again, taking all the principal and the interest up until 2023.
Thank you very much. Any other questions?
But if we, if we, if you wait until, say you pay the bond, pay as much as you can, you pay a certain amount on it, and you have the interest paid up to 23, it'd be kind of foolish to pay it off if you got to pay it anyway.
That's true.
Like that.
That's true. It's not like a GOB bond where you can call and say, hey, I want to pay this off, and I want to pay it off this Friday. Tell me how much I would owe in, in principal and interest, and they can do a calculation and say, well, this is what it is. It's not that you have to pay it off all the way until maturity date.
All right. Thank you very much, Ms. Johnson.
Thank you.
Next item we have on the agenda is a request of action on the fire alarm system at the detention center. The fire alarm system at the detention center right now is approaching 20 years old. I think it's 19 exactly, 19 years old. And we knew that it was having problems, and in the last budget cycle, we budgeted $100,000 to go toward the replacement of this system. We had Mead and Hunt help us with coming up with designing a new system and verifying the bids. We did put it out to bid. We had two bids on this project, one for Control Management, Inc., of $131,860, and one for Technology Solutions of Charleston for $79,000. We have had the bids, again, by Mead and Hunt, our engineer, we had them verified, and Technology Solutions is the bidder that they're recommending that council go with. And again, that's a low bid, and it's under what we had budgeted.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. Do we have a motion to approve the request of action? It's been moved and properly seconded to approve the request of action as stated. Any discussion? Seeing none, those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? All right. We're seven and zero.
Next, we have a request of action on modifying, changing how we operate the Fairfield County Airport. The airport currently is under the management of an FBO, and all management is contracted out. He collects all rents on hangars, gas fees, and we also pay him a fee to manage the airport. We're suggesting we take all those back and bring it in-house and have a manager in-house use all those fees to pay that person's salary, and then rent back space to the current FBO and treat him more as a vendor and allow him to use space for mechanic services and things like that that he also currently provides.
All right. Do we have a motion? All right, do we have a motion? It's been moved and properly seconded to approve the request of action as stated. Any discussion? Seeing none, those in favor, aye. Those opposed? We're seven and zero, the motion is adopted. Mr. Taylor?
The next is the reorganization of the Planning and Zoning Department. Currently, we have one person serving as our planning director and as our certified building official. It's kind of an unusual situation. Most places, they have a planning director who is more geared toward proactive approach to planning projects and securing funding for projects to revitalize communities and/or provide things such as sidewalks and water and sewer lines, things like that. The certified building official tends to be more reactive. That particular job is more going out and making sure a structure is, is built as it should be according to code, and also doing code enforcement on structures and yards and businesses that aren't meeting code. So we're suggesting that we split those duties and hire, and we did budget this also, a true planning director and have our current planning director concentrate on building code and planning, or, or in code enforcement.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. Do we have a motion? It's been moved and properly seconded to approve the request or the recommendation of the administrator as stated. Any discussion? Seeing none, those in favor, aye. Those opposed? We're seven and zero, the motion is adopted. Mr. Taylor?
Next, the hydrology study for the Watery Homeowners Association. As was mentioned earlier, the council did help commission a study to determine what may be contributing and causing the infill in Lake Watery in certain areas. We did commission the hydrologist, he came back with a study. You should have a copy of that study. And his feelings are that the Carolina adventure world does contribute to the runoff in the infill.
All right. Any discussion or questions on that?
I think you're still going to meet with the hydrologist.
We are, we're going to follow up on it.
And you talk about Corps of Engineers, maybe contacting them?
We're going to listen, now that we have his opinion, we're going to listen to recommendations on how we can fix the problem, stop what's occurring, and then possibly reverse what's happened.
All right, Mr. Taylor, you have anything else?
Just one final item, we left it off the agenda, but did want to introduce Mr. Tommy Morgan. He will be serving as the county's new attorney. He is with Debois Robinson. Mr. Morgan, you want to say a few words?
It's a pleasure to be with you all this evening. Look forward to working with the, the county in the best capacities I can. I'd like to thank Mr. Taylor for the opportunity to come on board with y'all, as well as give recognition to Mr. Jack James and the services that he provided. Jack did an excellent job and has left the county in good hands. We've had a good, efficient transfer of information and knowledge, and he stands ready to assist in this process. And he finally wanted to make sure that everybody knew that Jack's not retiring, he's just stepping back from this particular position and focusing on his private practice.
Thank you very much, Mr. Morgan. Look forward to working with you. All right. Thank you, Mr. Taylor. We're now down to clerk, the council's report, there is none. Second public comment session, Mrs. Davis.
We have one speaker tonight, Ms. Shirley Green, speaking on praise.
Good evening, counsel. Shirley Green, District 2, Ridgeway. On Saturday, September 30th, there will be a praise service at St. Luke Baptist Church in Wentzboro, and we're inviting, everyone's been invited. We have over 10 churches so far who've responded, and we'll have lots of praise coming up. We're praying for Fairfield County. We're hoping that all of the things that we've been through in the last few months are going to be over, and we're going to thank God for all of the things that he has in store for us. So I'd like everybody to come out and help us to praise the Lord. Thank you.
Thank you.
That concludes segment two.
That's at four, four o'clock.
Thank you, Mrs. Davis. We're now down to county council time. Any council members like to be recognized? Ms. Goins?
Good evening. Would like to once again thank Fairfield County, the West Side and all of it for such an awesome recreation opening on last Sunday. It was indeed a great celebration, and it was made possible by everybody contributing their time, sacrificing their time, just being there. Also want to stress, and I don't, sometimes I don't think people realize it, all of the recreation centers are for everybody in Fairfield County. They're not just because it's on that particular side or area that only the people on, persons on that side use it. It's for anybody, everybody, even visitors. And we want to use it like that, you know, take advantage of all those opportunities. Also want to say on last Sunday, I was privileged to present, and I wanted to do two surprises, wasn't able to do but one, to our Deputy Administrator, Deputy Anderson, Davis Anderson, a certificate of appreciation. And for those that were not present, I'm just going to read that briefly, and then I'm going to do quickly another presentation. And it says, "Certificate of appreciation presented to Davis Anderson, Deputy County Administrator, Fairfield County, South Carolina." And this was just amazing to me because when Clerk to Council, Davis, and I were going through and getting it presented, we didn't even recognize it until the last minute. "For 17 years of extraordinary service to the citizens of Fairfield County, presented this 17th day of September in the year 2017." So that just made it even more special to us. And we didn't have time, usually the council will vote on items like this to do certificates of presentations. We didn't have time. So on both of these, I'm going to ask our county team if you would autograph them. So we would, we'll be on the right page with us since we didn't vote. If you would make sure that you autograph each certificate. And the second certificate, it's a certificate of appreciation, presented to Jason, can you still hear me? Presented to Jason Taylor, County Administrator, Fairfield County, South Carolina, for extraordinary service to the citizens of Fairfield County. And this is presented this 17th day of September, year 2017. And I've already signed. Wanted to thank you so much.
I appreciate it.
Is this saying thank you for all that you all do? And I understand that many people, our team is extraordinary, it's huge, and everybody plays a unique part. But I think Mr. Taylor and Mr. Anderson get more phone calls than anybody probably in Fairfield County. So we just want to do this by way of saying to them, thank you for what they do. Right.
Anyone else? Mr. Roof?
Yeah, I'd like to echo ditto that. Ms. Goins, to Jason and Davis, the great job they do. And all of our other employees, our clerk and, and all of our employees just do a great job. Not thanked enough. Laura, I know you catch a lot of grief from the man sitting beside me, and I'm sorry for that, but, but anyway, we really do appreciate all y'all. And one other thing, I was supposed to miss a meeting last month, and I had to, had to postpone that due to death of my brother-in-law. And so, but I'll miss the next meeting, we're going to California to visit my sister. So thank y'all for coming too.
Thank you, Mr. Roof. Mrs. Goins?
Please, want to definitely thank Councilman Jimmy Ray Douglas for being present and being so active and, and just making a lot of fun. Thank you so much.
Anyone else? All right, I'd just like to let the other council members know, I saw this, was, was over here in my spot and just didn't see it anywhere else, that we've received an invitation to be at the open house, the old Fairfield High School, October 1st, Sunday at 3:00 PM, by the Fairfield Alumni Association Design Heel community. Just wanted to let y'all know that, just in case you didn't know. No one else? We'll go into executive session. Just like to state that in compliance with the South Carolina Freedom of Information Act, subsequent to executive session, council may take action on matters discussed in executive session. We'll go into executive session tonight to receive legal advice, review of potential litigation and other legal options regarding SCANNAS Plan abandonment of the proposed VC summer new nuclear units in Jenkinsville. We have a motion. It's been moved and properly seconded to go into executive session at this time for the reason as stated. Those in favor? Those opposed? Seven and zero, we're now in executive session. Thank you.